All right, it's June 16th, there we go. Good evening and welcome to the June 16th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Austin, would you please lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with the white request to speak cards. The request to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk on my right prior to the completion of any staff presentation. And for those speakers who would like to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission, please write Item A on your card. Or if you wish to speak on a specific item on the agenda, please write the agenda item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes, and you can track your time by monitoring the clock to my right. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to feel uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful to all speakers. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone, and please state your name for the record. Today we have two regular agenda action items for tonight's meeting. At this time, we will take up any presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission. And I do not see any? No? Okay. And the next item is course, respondents and staff communications from the Planning Commission's secretary, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, just real briefly, after we complete our agenda items and we get to informal discussion, I would like to discuss our upcoming meeting schedule briefly with the commission. Otherwise, that's all for staff communications at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any disclosure of ex parte communications among the commissioners to my left? No? To my right? No? Nobody? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Kelter?
Just want to make it clear for the record that I spent probably an hour, hour and a half at the Myers Ranch site during this past week.
Thank you for letting us know about that. Okay. And next item on our agenda is consideration and approval of the amendments from the June 2nd commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Sternfeld moved.
Second?
Commissioner Austin, second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? No no's? Okay. Moved unanimously. On our regular agenda, we have a public hearing regarding proposed major modification to Myers Ranch tentative subdivision map number 5042. Mr. Hardy will be providing a presentation. Yes, please come up for the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. This project is subdivision that was before the commission, June of 2014. So, three of you are new, so I'll give a little bit of backstory on it to bring everybody up. So, Evergreen Communities is looking to subdivide the 15.7 acres off of Jefferson. Could you go to the next slide? Here's an aerial of it. There are 16 lots that exist now, and it's roughly south of Perkins, east of Jefferson, and west of Partridge. Again, it was approved in June 2014. However, in late 2015, the title company came to their information, they had found that the roadways out there are actually indeed private. There's a little detail that was unbeknownst the first time this project came forth, so French, Harmon, Perkins, Partridge are all private. So, the original project has, after we looked at it in more detail, we had to address access issues, utilities, drainage, dead end, roadway depths for cul-de-sacs. So, therefore, with those changers, while minor, we felt it was appropriate to bring it forth to the commission for the review of the changes. As I mentioned, the 16 lots were originally part of the 1913 Jefferson subdivision, and they are legal lots of record today. Fifteen of the lots are one size an acre, or acre and one size, and one lot is .7, .3 acres was deeded over to one of the lots under the county jurisdiction. The applicant is only proposing the changes as it is related to the aforementioned items to address those and to the satisfaction of the city. All lots are still going to be served by public utilities coming down the new road down the center of the project. That's the old map of the subdivision. Next one, please. And so here's the lots in the assessor's map as it shows today, as it shows the 50-foot right-of-way for the private access for French traversing directly north and south in the project. Next one, please. So, here's the proposal that has come forth today. The access will all be taken off of Jefferson. There will be no access coming off of French. However, because French is a private road, the access, the 50-foot right-of-way for the private easement for that roadway will traverse between lots four and five and 12 and 13 for the future roadway. If someone out there wanted to get together and get the funds to pave it, they could do so. This project will not impinge the inability for that to occur and the roadway to commence. There is no pavement, as you saw on the aerial now currently through the site. They will be providing aprons into off the roadway between lots four and five and 12 and 13. So, curb sidewalk and gutter will terminate into that private easement area. Again, the connectivity to adjacent lots will not be impeded. There is a drainage canal to the east of the project, and one further to the south that's not directly on the project site, Morton Blackert Canal. So, part of the project came up with is the current proposal required the secondary access point way back when because of the depth of the cul-de-sac being in excess of 600 feet. Last December, the engineering division had a project in front of council. They approved the extending the dead-end depth, so the depth here at 1,200 feet is under those standards, and therefore no longer an issue. That was Resolution 1568. And it also provides consistency between Public Works standards and the fire department. In the center of the project site on lots five and lot 12 is an old RD 900 ditch. That ditch will be filled in and abandoned. V-ditches will be on the north end of the project and the south end of the project. And lots 10 and nine will have an overland release that will flow into the creek adjacent to, or the drainage ditch adjacent to Partridge. As previously discussed at the meeting in June of 2014, I'll sum up again. While the lots that are being proposed are in compliant with Southport Drainage, I mean it's Southport Framework Plan, overall, the project site meets the spirit and the intent of the policies of that document. All the lots are .98 acres. The density itself is not increasing nor decreasing what was originally approved. The amount of lots that originally were there under the original Jefferson map are 16. The 2014 approval of the previous project was 16 lots, and there are still 16 lots today. There is no change in that. So, again, the applicant is proposing to provide public sewer and water, parcels that are slightly less than one acre, however, remains one acre and the same number of lots. Under this scenario, staff feels that the .98 acre gross lots would be compatible to the RAA zone. Each lot will be served by public water and sewer. The size of lots would not negatively impact the character of the surrounding area. The proposed density is consistent with the rural residential agricultural density standards per the Southport Framework Plan and provides for only minimal configuring of the existing approved 16.98 acre lots to address the aforementioned items that were a result of coming to light that French Avenue was indeed private, and therefore that secondary access couldn't be required as part of the regional approval from June. So, that concludes my report, giving you the overview and discussing the changes that we had to deal with in order to amend the project to comply with the standards of the city. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
I'll start to my left. Are there any questions by my fellow commissioners? All right, to my right, any questions?
I guess I have two. I only had one before, but now I have two. French Road being there, somebody decides they want to put French Road in, will those lots still be almost an acre?
The gross lot is still .98 acres.
So, if the road goes in, the other lots are still almost an acre?
Correct.
So, they're larger than that now?
The gross lot of each of the 16 lots is .98.
No, I'm talking about those four lots. Those four lots, if I put in a road, are they still going to be acre lots?
The easement will go through the lots.
I know, but they're going to use it as a road, so then the acre, will the lot still be an acre?
Correct. Still be .98.
The other part was, I talked to David about it, and you kind of showed the map. I couldn't remember where I saw the map with all those little parcels on it. It was 25 years ago when we were doing the very first general plan is when I saw that. And it shows all those as lots that are, I guess, viable lots to this day.
Correct.
My question that I had for David, and I'm sure he passed it to you, was how do we access those other parcels? If we could go back to that map for one second, that little puppy. So, how do we get to the other lots that are surrounding that? North and south, we could use?
French.
French.
If somebody will pave it. Once it's improved to a rural road standard, east of the project is an RD 900 ditch, drainage ditch. There's two of them, one along French and one along Partridge, so going east, you would have?
Well, yeah, but we still, there's still lots back there. So, how do we get to those lots? Off of Partridge?
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking, rather than coming off of this parcel? How do they get there today?
I don't think Partridge is paved. Can we go to the aerial?
I don't think there's a road back there. Just lots. I was just wondering how the guy accessed his property today.
Some of the lots that are out there today are not accessible. Many of the rights of way that were shown on that Jefferson map, some of them don't exist or never were built. Some of them have canals in them, and so that's partially why many of those properties haven't developed, because you can't get to them. This project doesn't change that at all. It actually maintains the north-south French private right-of-way, you know, in this area. So, you know, we're working on another project site that's south of this area, and there are all those existing lots still there from 1915 on paper, but most of them you can't get to. So, the landowner is trying to figure out how to get access to those lots so that they could be developed.
I guess my main concern is I haven't figured out, I mean, somebody has to get back there because you just don't let it go forever. There's got, they grow weed on it or do something back there, David.
Yeah, there's likely some informal accesses, but even all of these rights of way are expressly reserved as private on that 1915 map. So, this is a bit of a conundrum in this larger, in the larger sense, in this area is if people do purchase those lots, how are they going to, you know, be able to get to them? You know, in this project here, you know, the rights of way that were shown on that map, you know, remain the same. They're just connecting to Jefferson because they have that frontage.
Well, I guess my concern is, and this will take us back another couple of years, we were dealing with the subdivision just to the west of Allen Avenue, and we kind of talked about it the other day. That subdivision, Allen Avenue has only one way in, which is Allen Avenue off of the Tower Mart.
Yeah.
And so, we wanted to figure out how we would connect something to the next subdivision down so you'd have access, and there is nothing. Now, we carved out a little niche in there and provided it, but there's no roadways, and we always said you should never have a subdivision that blocks off completely so you never can access the next one. And this one really does that somewhat unless we're considering Partridge to be their access road.
Well, in this case, they retain the existing rights of way, you know, that are out there, French being the most important one. And because there are lots just to this, there's a couple of lots just to the south of this that are between this project site and the canal, that but for French would be cut off. So, by keeping the French Avenue right-of-way going through the center of this project, those properties, at least on paper, still have the access that was afforded to them under the 1915 map.
I guess then my final question, are we leaving that access open? What are we doing to it? Are they building a fence around it? Are they leaving it open so you could access it? Or do we know?
Well, it's a private right-of-way, it's expressly reserved for all the property owners within the bounds of that subdivision, so it can't be blocked.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Right. Commissioner Sternfeld?
Yeah, just following up, I'm wondering if there's a reason why we would not pave the right-of-way that we've set aside within the property lines, recognizing it wouldn't go anywhere, but at least putting the road within the actual property that's being developed now and having almost a complete street feel there in that neighborhood as opposed to just ending the sidewalk, having a turn-in to nowhere, and then starting the sidewalk up again? Is there been any discussion about why that would not be preferred over the proposal?
I did have discussions with department, and it was a condition we could have placed upon the project, and it was felt that it wasn't needed at this time for, and the recommendation wasn't for us to do that as staff, so that was our direction. But, you know, if the commission were to feel strongly about that being paved and add that condition, that would be, you know, certainly at the pleasure of the commission to add that condition. You know, it would, you know, when you take a roadway to the terminus of the property, you know, naturally folks will think it's never going to go through, and then when you propose it does, you know, you have a whole nother dynamic. But, the roadway exists on the map. If they wanted to pave it, they could. They just aren't proposing to do so, and staff was, I originally wanted to potentially have that discussion, but we were told not needed.
I mean, I guess, so from my perspective, I'm welcome to hear the applicants as well, but I would prefer to see a completed street there even if it didn't go anywhere within the property, just because I think if I'm someone purchasing that property, I'm used to having this extra yard space for 10, 12 years, and then suddenly I find out it's going to be paved and I'm going to have a road going through, I'd rather know that upfront and actually have that infrastructure there to start with, and it be part of the neighborhood as opposed to, you know, having this kind of curbside that ends to leave there for, leave a road, eventual road there, but there actually not being a road there. And I say that thinking about several other neighborhoods, you know, near this one in Southport where development has not encroached any further, and we have roads that aren't finished, but they stop at the property line. And so, I feel like there's, you know, in the past, we've made a decision to do that. This one's a little different because obviously the dynamics are quite different, and the subdivision's very old, but...
It's old, even older than me. You're right.
So, I just, I'd be interested in getting other commissioners' thoughts on the applicants to it at some point, whether or not for this neighborhood and the look and the feel of the neighborhood and the completeness of the neighborhood, if that's a better alternative than leaving it bare with the idea that one day we may or may not create a road out of it.
May I add, the lots would be, you know, fenced off for that area to be demarcated, that it is not part of the, you know, developable area. Eventually, it's for the right-of-way, but I do see your point that, you know, they could get comfortable thinking that it was there to build on and use, and eventually we have the, wait, I've been using it for all these years, so.
Thank you.
Anything else for staff?
Seems like there are no other questions at this time, so at this time, I would like to request that the applicant or provide any kind of presentation or information and answer the questions by the commissioners that you think could be answered at this time. You can introduce yourself too.
Madam Chairwoman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, my name is Robert Hedrick. I'm the Managing Principal of Cardno. We are the planning, engineering, and environmental consultant on the project, representing the applicant and our client, Evergreen Communities, who's also represented here tonight. On behalf of Evergreen and the project team, I would like to start off by saying that I'd like to personally thank the city staff, particularly Mark Collier, who's here in the audience tonight, Deena Curtley and Justin Hardy for diligently and proactively working with us throughout this process. While the project had previously received tentative map approval, as you're aware, the associated modifications required periodic interaction to ensure compliance, and moreover to ensure we were proceeding based on a collective understanding and agreement as to how to proceed, given the disposition of the change of roadway from public, really, to private We fully intend to maintain this interaction and dialogue. It was really positive, I thought. The back and forth was really good dialogue. I think we accomplished a lot during that process, and we intend to continue that throughout the permit document and final map phase of the project as well as into construction. In addition, we'd also like to thank and acknowledge Kenrick Jamison of RD 900 for also taking the time to meet with us on more than one occasion to iron out some critical issues related to the existing onsite as well as adjacent irrigation and drainage ditches. The disposition of these facilities and our focus on proposing a site layout that effectively addresses the conveyance of stormwater while also preserving and protecting onsite trees, some of which are heritage, was and is a critical component to the project. We have thoroughly reviewed the staff report, recommended actions, project conditions and mitigation measures, and are in agreement with all recommendations. Before I turn it back over to you all for questions, just to quickly answer Commissioner Sternfeld's question regarding having a continuous road north-south for French Avenue, one of the issues there is because of the length of the lot line, the road would require a fire department requisite turnaround, and there isn't currently adequate easement with which to provide that fire department turnaround. That's one of the issues. The other issue, and I think we did have discussions about this during our ongoing meetings, is the easement exists as a reservation of right for the existing residences when the demand exists to have the roadway be put into place. We just don't see that that demand is there right now to install blacktop at this point in time. With that, I'm certainly open to questions, and I'm sure Tom Colleen, who's here as the applicant for Evergreen, is open to answer any questions that you may have. And thank you very much.
Okay. I'll open it up for questions. To my right, Commissioner Moore?
Do you don't have adequate turnaround space for the fire department with this map?
We do not. No, there's, if a roadway were to continue north and south, we would have to add either a cul-de-sac for turnaround, or we would have to add a hammerhead, a blacktop hammerhead.
Are you talking about French rather than Myers?
French Avenue, that's correct. That's correct, yes.
Myers has got adequate access.
Yes, Myers does.
Okay.
But if we were to continue French Avenue as a blacktop road, we would be required to install a turnaround.
Maybe. I don't know.
Not maybe. Absolutely.
I don't know that I, I don't know that I agree with that because of the fact that if you were to do French, French already exists off of, can't think of the road, where's it coming in at?
Perkins.
Perkins, no? Perkins?
Well, south of the canal, French is there, like, on either side of Harmon, but we're cut off from all that because of the Blackert Canal, so this is sort of a disconnected segment of French. Okay, here.
And David brings up another good point as well, that the northern terminus of the existing easement of French Avenue, that is where the RD 900 ditch comes into the project site. We're using that area to also capture off-site flows from upstream of our site, north of the property, to convey it in that northerly ditch that then conveys to the eastern ditch on the east side of the property.
Okay. So, if I can just ask staff if they have any comments on this concept of needing a dead end or hammerhead at the end of the terminus, and also since I'll try to be brief...
Yeah, we'd like to ask Mark to address that. That was sort of part of the original concept on the project.
Yeah, the applicant is correct. If you have a paved roadway in excess of 150 feet, you are required to have a turnaround, fire apparatus turnaround, which would have a radius of 46 feet.
And the distance from...
150 feet from the new road that they're constructing, so you'd really need one on both ends, the north end and the south end. The other thing to consider is this would be a private improvement. It wouldn't be publicly owned or maintained. This would have to be maintained by this property owner, which really isn't getting any benefit from it at all.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So, alternatively, I'd just also like to throw out there to consider if the likelihood is that this, the continuation of this road will never be built, is it better for this neighborhood to have a complete sidewalk than having a turnout with a road that will never be built? Just from the dynamics and the look of the site. I mean, I would rather it be one or the other instead of this in-between, either have the road and make it look complete, or have sidewalks with the recognition that if they ever want to improve the road, then part of that, part of the project is then also to remove the sidewalks and create endings for the turn. So, I just have a little trouble being in-between.
Commissioner Sternfeld, if I can clarify one thing, what we are proposing is the city's classification for a rural residential roadway, which is 24 feet of asphalt pavement, six feet of shoulder on both sides, no walk currently.
So, no walk.
Just wanted to clarify that.
So, at those turning points, there's just, there's nothing? There's no sidewalk to end, there's no...
It's just radius returns, and we are proposing barricades at this point in time at the terminus on the north and the south side.
And staff mentioned there would be fencing down those property lines between the easement, each end of the easement, is that correct or no?
That's correct.
So, the property owners on those lots that are adjacent to would, their property line would be there, there'd be fencing, there'd be space for the easement, and then a new fence and a new property, the next property, is that correct? Or is it just on the ends?
No, it's, it would be continuous along the property line.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Austin.
Thanks. Could you describe what, if any, outreach you've done with neighboring residents or property owners?
We've been, we've visited the site on numerous occasions. We actually walked the site with Deena Curtley. We've had discussions with numerous residences in the area. I think Tom could probably speak better to that. I think Tom has had discussions with a lot of those residents. I was busy conducting my engineering research and surveying, but I do know that at various points during our visits, there were discussions with existing residences. There weren't any specific public outreach meetings that we had formed or scheduled other than just introducing ourselves and meeting some of the residences that exist out there today.
For the record, I'm Tom Colleen. I'm with Evergreen Communities. We've actually done outreach on a couple of occasions. Two years ago, when the map came up before you... Two years ago, when the map came up before you, we had contacted and gone through a process of contacting all of the adjacent neighbors. At that time, the issue essentially was, we had to go off-site. So we had to extend a water line from the project down to Perkins and then up to Jefferson. That would have impacted neighbors to that side, and so we reached out at that time. During the last two years, not the last two years, but the last year, our owner, C.C. Myers, and myself have also talked occasionally with most of the surrounding neighbors. And for all intents and purposes, they were satisfied with the redirect that we were doing relative to containing our project within its boundaries. That is, access off of Jefferson Avenue, water line going up to Jefferson, and then handling all of our drainage intact and onsite. The previous map had proposed a hammerhead and a turnaround for French, but that was, we weren't required to go do that at the time that that was approved.
Yeah, thank you very much. From my recollection, so that's what I was actually looking for, from my recollection, nearby property owners were more concerned about more disruption rather than less disruption. At that time, it sounded like they would be less inclined to be supportive of roads paving what would be French Avenue. I just wanted to bring this up because we don't have, it doesn't seem like there's any public comment, or it doesn't seem like there's a lot of people here interested in speaking on the topic. But again, two years ago, that's what people were interested in, in a kind of rural residential designation, they wanted kind of ranch-style rural, as little disruption as possible. So from my perspective, what I have seen in some comparable neighborhoods, where there's been easements or undeveloped areas, I've seen residents taking it upon themselves to turn it into kind of guerrilla gardening, which have really become valuable assets for the neighboring community. So I would, I don't want to assume what community members would be interested in, but it's been my experience with the residents who were here two years ago, and residents who live in similar areas, that they may prefer to not have, to have an area that could be undeveloped and not paved with asphalt. The other thing that I'm concerned about is if we paved the areas, that there would not be public maintenance of it, and that if and when 10 and 30 years from now the areas do get developed, it wouldn't be a serviceable road anyway. So my preference would be to leave these areas as easements that are unbuilt. I would be supportive of making it, you know, making it not seem like an incomplete street, just, you know, a straight paving without it seeming to be more of an intersection to nowhere. But I am supportive of the project as proposed, and so far, supportive of staff recommendation. So, thank you. Thank you for efforts on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, feedback? Yes, Commissioner Kelter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm concerned about the issue of sidewalk. I understand that it's not a requirement. The school is very close by. It seems reasonably likely that there may be some children there going to the school. I understand also that there isn't going to be a whole lot of traffic on Myers Avenue. Nonetheless, sidewalks are safer, and if there is some way to do it, I think it would improve the project if that could happen. Is there any way, do you think, to do some kind of walk that's not on the automobile right-of-way that would be a little bit safer for kids going to school?
Let me just interject. What would be your opinion on a sidewalk or curb on one side and not both sides?
You know, for something like, yeah, I think.
Even try their bicycle and.
I'm just throwing that out there as an alternative.
Just one thing worth mentioning, the rural roadway classification in the city's West Sacramento calls for roadside ditches adjacent to the six-foot-wide shoulder. So really, the paved asphalt is sheet-flowing across the shoulder to get to the ditch, to be able to convey to the onsite ditches, in essence. I don't think we would necessarily object to having something within the six-foot-wide shoulder. I certainly don't want to speak on behalf of the city. I think Mark would need to weigh in on public safety issues, because the current classification does not call for any curb to separate the vehicular traffic from pedestrian traffic.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leibig?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just for the applicants. I had a couple of just particular questions about the project. On Jefferson, at the intersection of Myers and Jefferson, on the tentative map three of five, there's a width there. There's something on the map there, and I honestly can't figure out what it is. Do you know what it is? It goes across Jefferson. It doesn't appear to be anything like a signal, but it's two lines in a box with a width.
Is there a, do we have sheet number three on the?
That's the water connection.
It's just a water connection.
It's the water connection.
Sounds like it's the water connection.
All right, thank you. My concern was that it not be any sort of traffic light, because if we do add another traffic light on Jefferson.
Yeah, I know.
That you might find us hanging from it one day. So that was a specific one. The rest, the rest of my comments are just commentary, and I'll wait till after the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Kelter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have another question. The Jefferson Avenue side, if I'm reading this correctly, shows a wall, both separating Lot 1 and Lot 16 from Jefferson. Can you say a little bit more about what that's going to be like? The sidewalk on Jefferson is not all that welcoming, should I say, to pedestrians, and I don't think a wall would help it be any more welcoming. But I'm curious what you were thinking of in terms of what it would look like and what properties it would have.
You want to speak to it? In the rural residential area, we want to maintain that character. One of the issues that you will, of course, look into or be affected by is the traffic noise from Jefferson.
Sure.
And so one of the thoughts there would be to going a little bit deeper into the property off of the Jefferson right-of-way, to probably have a berm and maybe some type of a short mason-reap wall that goes across there that would provide some sound attenuation that would be of benefit to those two adjoining lots that are across the front there. And so I think that's essentially what has been proposed. I can't recall if you have a detail on the map that shows that, but it would be something like that.
Is there any possibility that that could include some foliage, maybe a couple of trees, which also absorb sound and improve the pedestrian experience on Jefferson?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, there, with the Jefferson Boulevard improvements that were previously done, there are, I believe, seven or eight existing crepe myrtles that have already been planted along that corridor. They're already there and in place. Our plan is to leave those intact. As it relates to additional landscaping, yeah, that would certainly be something that we could incorporate probably into those two lots. So we wouldn't be, we would certainly be supportive of that. Let me just make another comment. The site has about 69 trees on it, and we've been very judicious to try and preserve all of the ones that we can. There are a few that will be in roadways and areas that need to come out just to serve the project, but we've gone to great lengths to try and preserve all the trees that we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? No, none at this time. And I do want to ask for Mark to answer the question related to, what was the question related to? I think Commissioner Kelter, you had a question related to either pavement or some sidewalk that could be built there? If you can provide some feedback on that.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I guess I wouldn't argue that a sidewalk wouldn't provide some additional level of safety. This subdivision is a rural subdivision, and it does qualify for our rural road standard, which does include the six-foot-wide compacted A.B. shoulders, which would provide for some pedestrian pathway. We've just determined a long time ago, for this type of development, for this density and the anticipated average daily traffic, that a sidewalk isn't required.
So no sidewalk is required, you think, in your opinion?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Kelter, are you okay with that?
Well, I understand it. It seems like an area, it seems to me, anyway, that an area this close to the community school would be perhaps a little less rural than other parts of the surrounding area. If we're trying to promote pedestrianism and kids walking or biking to school so that they can avoid a five-pound weight gain per year, which is pretty important to their future health status, it's better to have more kids living closer to the school than farther away. So this is almost adjacent to the school property. It's within, I'm sure, a few hundred yards, and this would seem to be an ideal place for families with children, and it would just make sense to me. I understand it's not required, but that's where I'm coming from on it.
Understood.
Thank you. I do have one request to speak, as we are currently in the public comment of the hearing. Ms. Lorraine Lund, would you please come on up?
Good evening. This is Lorraine Luna, and I represent the Martinez Family Trust. That property is adjacent to the property that is being currently developed. There was some outreach. C.C. Myers did come to my mother's home and discussed what the options might be. I followed up with a letter asking C.C. Myers to let us know what the plans were. Since that time, in February, we were unaware of any plans to proceed with redirecting the canal. And so now, I'm a little concerned about what the runoff will be in filling the canal. We've never had flooding, and knowing that the development is elevated, it does change the way the runoff will occur, so I have concerns about that. Additionally, this is a separate issue. However, we did have another developer come onto my mother's property without prior notice, and they also had surveyors come onto the property the next day. So I'm concerned about outreach and having that be in writing rather than a telephone call or a drop-in visit.
Thank you. And just, out of curiosity, how did you find out about tonight's meeting and this being?
There was a letter.
There was a letter?
Yes.
Okay. And that was a letter from the city?
Yes.
Okay. And I appreciate you coming up and letting us know. And for the runoff, is it, so for the rainy season, it helps to, you know, keep the water away from your home? Can you provide me with a little bit of an explanation so I can get a visual?
So my mother, I believe, owns approximately 11 acres. The home is in the front, nearest Jefferson, but the additional acreage is in the back. So it's just, it used to be a space for grazing for cattle, and since then, there is basically nothing out there. There's no growing or anything occurring, it's just vacant. And so we've, there are currently, you know, the canals that are currently present there. So we've never had an issue with any, even in the rainiest of seasons, there's never been any flooding, even in the back pasture. So just have some concerns about how that will affect the property.
Okay. I think, I think having an answer to that, I think I would have that question, too, if I was a property owner.
Where is your, I'm sorry, where is the property? Is it south?
It's adjacent. It's right, so there is, it's 3105 Jefferson Boulevard. So there is the development, and then there is a section of property that I'm not sure who it's owned by.
Well, I was just trying to figure out if you're going towards the high school or?
Away from, so it's south.
South, okay. So you're the property just south of this project?
Yes.
Is it reflected in this map?
Where, it's right across from Blacker. So the Blacker Canal runs parallel to the property.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So if anybody from the staff can provide an answer to that question.
At the close of the public hearing, we can respond to any of the comments that have come up.
Okay. All right. At this time, no, there are no other requests to speak, so we will answer the question as we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. And, okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for a continued discussion among the commissioners.
Mark can respond on the drainage question.
Yes, so currently, you have the French Avenue ditch, which will be filled in through the, that bisects the property, and then you have the Partridge Avenue ditch on the eastern boundary of the project, which both carry flow from the north to the south to the Blacker Canal. And this project will be capturing the flow at its northern boundary on the French Avenue and directing the flow due east to the Partridge Canal. It'll also be capturing drainage along its southern boundary, and I believe contiguous to her property, and directing that flow over to Partridge. So if anything, it'll be, it'll reduce the amount of flow from this property to hers. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Yes, it does. All right, is there any, are there any other questions or comments among the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Sternfelds?
Yes, Chair, I just want to comment briefly, because I appreciate Commissioner Kelter's dilemma here, where we have what is classified as rural residential development, however, very close to a high school, a shopping center, and several higher-density developments all around it. And so I both agree and appreciate his concerns about, you know, the broader question may be whether or not that's the right type of classification and zoning of this parcel, given the development we have and the development we want. And so I would think that, you know, that's something we should all consider, maybe, and I would love to hear some other comments on the context of this proposal, recognizing from the commissioners, who have been here longer than I, that we've already approved this project, but also recognizing the changing, the changes in our community and how some of the pieces of the puzzle that come with this project may not fit with what's happening all around it, i.e. lack of sidewalk or further infrastructure and those items. So I'll leave that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other feedback on Commissioner Sternfeld's comments, or?
I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Moore, and then Commissioner Austin.
Actually, what Bernadette said makes so much sense to me about the roadway over there, and the one that we're not going to build, that, you know, which is fine. You know, maybe French doesn't have to be built at this time. What I was thinking of, if we don't put pavement on it, all you're going to have is a lot with a bunch of weeds on it. And I never figured out how we were going to handle all that. Whereas if we, if you were providing it as a park area, garden area, something, at least it would be maintained. I just haven't figured out what you're going to do with it if you don't pave it, except make a mess out there. So I thought the idea of having something like that, a gardening area or a park area of some type, would be beneficial. When even making it where you put a little condition on it, watch your attorney talk now, that, you know, when I come up with these brilliant ideas, you go, no, you won't. But, you know, where, if that road needs to be built, we say we'll participate in that assessment district, and you could put that in every lot that you sell out there. So if it ever becomes necessary, they're going to participate and help build it, and secondarily, come up with a plan that you're going to do something on the lot besides grow weeds. I can grow weeds, but I can't grow vegetables and stuff. So I think we need to have an idea. You need to have some sort of a plan. And the other little side note there, and I know that I'm the only kid that ever would have thought of this in my life, if I was trying to get to the high school, if I was a high school kid, I would be cutting across over there on French, getting over to Perkins, because then you're right next to the high school. Now, I'd never like to take the long route because Now, I'd never like to take the long route because that would require that I exercise and lose weight. So I never did that. But, I mean, I think you've got to kind of take this whole project and look at it. And I think it's a legitimate project. It's not a bad project. You know, so I mean, yes, we have lots out there. Yes, we're going to provide lots. I just think that we need to take an extra moment to look at the project and say, what are we really going to do with French? What are you going to do? Just grow weeds? I don't think that's a good idea. So hence, maybe we should pave it. If you pave it, at least you're not going to have an eyesore out there. If you don't want to pave it, then tell me your other alternative idea, which may be the gardening idea or a park idea or something out there besides growing weeds. And I know Mark's got all kinds of ideas and, you know, you talk to him and he'd come up with one. But I don't know what to put out there. But I don't think weeds is our answer. I think we've got to have a better plan. I think the project needs just a little more thought. And having the idea of the sidewalk is a great idea if you could get the kids not to cut across on French to get over to Perkins. And we're not going to build a sidewalk over there. So I don't know that I have all the answers for you, but I think I have more questions on this project than I have answers. And I think I'd like to, you know, either get an idea from staff or the attorney who's chomping at the bit to talk. But I think we've got to come up with some ideas. And it's not bad to say that we're not prepared to move forward if we're really not. If we don't have answers, we can put it off for a couple of weeks. It's not going to kill anything. So those are my comments.
Chair Guerrero, yes, I'd like to respond to a couple of the comments that have been made. First of all, I'd like to direct the commission's attention to the approval that's being sought. It's a tentative subdivision map as opposed to a legislative approval like a rezone or a general plan amendment in which the commission can exercise legislative discretion and basically whether it likes this project or not. Under this particular entitlement, what you're really looking at is, has the applicant demonstrated compliance with the Subdivision Map Act and the city's own code? And here, the commission may or may not like the particular zoning code provision here, but that's something that needs to be decided at a later date through a zoning code amendment. In addition, as staff has indicated, this project is not required to provide sidewalks. So unless the applicant volunteers to do so, that's not something that we can condition this project upon.
Thank you.
And on that valuable comment, no, actually, it's, I was going to, this was going to be my comment even before I heard from our attorney. So regardless of whether we're talking about additional conditions to the approval for this tentative map, I think it's important for the applicant to really hear what the commission is saying. And I'm hearing, and the public, and I'm hearing two major things. One is, I think you definitely want to talk with some of your neighbors and maybe perhaps, you know, I'm not demanding public outreach, but I do think that it's helpful to have dialogue, particularly with the neighbors are going to be right in the immediate vicinity well before you start construction on homes. And the other thing that we're hearing, I think, is a little more nuanced. This is essentially a rural designation that's going to feel like infill development. So that's what we're dealing with here. And so when you have this sort of infill development where you're adjacent to, you know, the only high school in town and our, one of our main shopping centers, the market for this house, for who's going to be living here, is probably a little bit different than other rural residential. You don't have to do some of the things that we're recommending or requesting here as a planning commission, but I think that you could market your product a lot better if it were family-friendly. And those family-friendly components could include more of an open space feel along the easement where a French Avenue would be. And again, we're not going to condition sidewalks, but I think it would be helpful to bear that in mind, that you will be attracting families that potentially have children, whether they're teenagers or young children. So just from a market perspective, you know, what we're saying is kind of our opinion, but we are here for a reason. We represent the different demographics of people who choose to live in West Sacramento. So hopefully you can take that as added value rather than just a criticism of your component. And again, I want to echo what my other commissioners are saying is we want really high-quality development here. And I think that what you're going to build is high-quality development. I think we're trying to refine it and just make it even that much better. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Timber.
I actually completely agree with Commissioner Austin's recommendations. But I did have.
I did have one question. Should I repeat what I said?
No, you're fine.
Okay. I did have one question. So it's my understanding that the property that we're discussing between lots four and five and lots 12 and 13, it's my understanding that there is an easement, which means that the property owners are going to have that property within their fencing unless or until a road is constructed. Is that, Mona, is that correct, as far as my understanding of what an easement is?
An easement would be a reservation of a property interest. So for those lots that have been identified with the underlying easement, when that's recorded, it will also record the fact that there's an easement there. So there's a potential for the other property owner holding that easement right to be able to, for example, pave or do whatever's necessary.
I'm sorry. I don't understand. So when the property is sold, lot four is going to be sold with the easement as an encumbrance on the property, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And so they can put a fence on it, flower beds, whatever they want, until and if the city chooses to pave the road through, is that correct? Or the city or the neighborhood, I mean whoever. But until there's a paved road, the property owner of lot four would have that extra space as their own to use as they choose?
Well, it is a private road, including an easement. So I don't think that we're going to have city involvement there. But whatever they decide to have occur on the surface of the property is at their own risk. Certainly, they can grow flowers or landscape it. But if the easement holder decides to exercise their property interest and pave, for example, then yes, that property owner would be affected by that.
And who would the easement holder be in this case?
I don't know.
Yeah, this is where this gets a little challenging because the easement holder is really all of the property owners within the bounds of that Jefferson subdivision, which actually by virtue of a fire station actually even includes the city. But this is, it's expressly reserved for the property owners within the bounds of that subdivision. So, you know, the most likely scenario, which probably isn't even that likely, is that the property owners here, say, north of Blacker, they would get together, form a road maintenance association, improve the road, and with a key part, then having a funding mechanism for ongoing maintenance.
Okay. So thank you for that clarification. The reason I'm asking is because we're talking about a potential community garden or a park space or something like that. And the reason I was asking is I don't even know if that's something that we can determine, if it's already within the, as you've currently proposed the project, I don't know if it's already within those properties pending that condition. So anyway, I think it would be great to have some sort of a community space. I also think with the idea of, it's my understanding that there is no other community like this in West Sacramento with one-acre parcels and somewhat residential but still rural. It's, am I right? I'm pretty sure there's, I've looked. So. I'm very excited about this project.
You've got to go back to the old map. There's a bunch of them out in that area.
Well, there's nothing new. There's no new development of this type. And so I really do appreciate this project. But in the same context that Commissioner Austin was saying, I think you would be well-advised to take some of the tips. I was actually thinking of the sidewalks not really as students potentially walking to school, but families and, you know, members of all generations that live here like to go for, they like to go for walks. All ages like to go for walks after dinner. And I mean, my neighborhood is full of people going for walks after dinner at six o'clock. So I think you would be really well-advised to have sidewalks and some landscape where you can add it and use that easement for more of a community space. Also, my background is that I grew up in this, I grew up rural. That's how I grew up. And we didn't really have any sidewalks or anywhere to go and play. And we used to really just kind of, I used to rollerblade on the street and I used to fall off the edge of the street. So the sidewalks would be really, I feel like they'd be used. So anyway, thank you for bringing this project back. And hopefully, hopefully, we're going to move on it fairly soon, but I think it's a great project.
Commissioner Leibert?
Thank you. Thank you for all the details in the report. I don't want to echo too many of my commissioners. Some of the comments are all over the place. I do agree with several of them. I think the shortcut to the high school is a great idea. I think it's going to happen with or without a path. So as an option, I also grew up on a rural street. I really actually appreciate the charm of them. And although I could see an issue with the actual construction of sidewalks, a wide shoulder, for example, could function as a walkway on that one. Some comments that concerned me, barricades for that easement, I'm not sure if that's necessary. Paving it, paving a dead end to me implies that you're building a parking lot for somebody because that's all that it will be functional for unless you put a basketball hoop out there. So again, this property belongs to owners of those four lots until the association, which hasn't been formed yet, makes a decision on what they want to do with it. So it's a little difficult to condition that, but all we could do is make recommendations. But on the parts we can talk about, I do agree with other commissioners about Myers and keeping that somewhat complete. I'm not sure if we need to put barricades out there, hammerheads, whatever you call, for a street that doesn't exist. As long as they're, as long as the owners know what they're buying when they buy them. I would like to actually just express one concern. We have several houses now coming into Jefferson. They're forced to go onto Jefferson. And Jefferson's a fast-moving street. I would have preferred the connection be on a side street, but that's just not possible. So I am struggling with it on that note. At the same time, I really don't want adding more streetlights to Jefferson. Some of us have gotten beaten up over that. So this is not my ideal connection point, but if there are no other options right now, we have to move forward with it. But I would definitely keep that option open to connect to French. And I would encourage, when you do subdivide this, that you possibly form some sort of an association to look into it or, I forgot what David called it, street.
Road Maintenance Association.
Thank you. So that's it. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we have had a thorough discussion about some key points here in this development. And I do just want to add a few points. I appreciate the presentation provided by the applicant's representative and the owner. And I think that, you know, hearing from you helped me to really see how much work that you have done with the staff and the institutional memory as far as what we can do to properly build things and, you know, move forward. Your knowledge and expertise on, you know, what our limitations are and how to help this developing community continue to grow naturally and organically. And the institutional memory from my colleagues and those that have expertise in the area has been very helpful for me to feel comfortable making a recommendation that this should be approved and not hold it off for another night. I think we're okay with, you know, based on the discussion that we had tonight. So I also value all the work you're going to do, you know, to protect the habitat and the trees that are there. That's really, I think, really important to me to make sure that that, you know, continues to be sustained. I know there's some unknowns there, but that you'll be monitoring for that. And then also just working with our, you know, the American culture, you know, resources as we move forward. That's really important to work collaboratively with them as well as we do, as we've seen things happen. Know that there could be some barriers there in the future, but just keeping that, that's really important and being mindful of that. Also, another point is the inclusionary housing as I'm well aware of, you know, just those that are having difficulty finding housing. These are big lots and seeing what could be done about that to nurture that in this, you know, particular development. And there are no other comments or questions?
I do have.
Yes, Commissioner Moore.
My final comment on French Road, so we'll stop this. Remember, the applicant's the one that said he was going to fence it off so French Road would exist. I never heard anybody say that road was being given to the other homes and coming back because he said he's fencing it off. So French Road's going to sit there. That's why I said you need an alternative to it.
I see.
Is that not what was said?
We'd have to get.
And we have to get clarification from staff. I think that, I'm hearing different things on that. I'm not really sure about that. Go ahead, Don. Mr. Hardy.
Each lot was, as my understanding, was going to have a fence of its own on the property line.
Yeah, and also on condition number seven, which is a holdover from the previous, we were looking for some additional details on fencing to make sure we're looking at open-style fencing through here, not the standard, you know, six-foot-high wood fence. This is, you know, a rural, this is most definitely what we've also characterized as sort of a rural infill-type project. So we are trying to maintain, you know, that rural character. And so we want to make sure that these areas remain as open as possible, but still noting that once homes are built, people may want to have at least some side yard fencing. But in this case, that would need to be something that's open.
Commissioner Moore, is that the same thing that you're referring to?
Well, I mean, I thought the applicant, you know, I mean, Justin, you may have to be the one that tells me, but it sounded like we were going to see French Road exist. It was going to be, your property line was going there and French Road was still going to be there. That's why I was saying you either need to pave it or you need to provide something for it. I never heard anybody tell me that French Road was just going to be imaginary in there and that the property owners would build on top of it.
Yeah. So can I weigh in on that? So we're not discussing like a street or abandonment or an alley abandonment. So we're not talking about a private road being abandoned. In my mind, it's an easement that would not be owned by any single property owner. And in my fantasy world, it would look more like the easement behind my house near Honda Hill, the area behind, where the main drain parkway is. That's what I could foresee this community being where it's a property that isn't, a portion of property that's a sliver. It could look like a pocket park that isn't actually developed, but could have, you know, that wouldn't be weed-infested. And I really think that if, I would imagine that these are going to be higher-end homes on a one-acre lot and neighbors in that area would not allow it to be weed-infested. I think that just naturally that this demographic wouldn't have a weed-overgrown thing. I think they would turn it into a pocket park. Maybe assuming too much, but knowing the people in our community.
It was just my understanding from what the applicant said that they were going to kind of, that was going to be the fence line. So this was going to be just an open area there.
Right. Right. I think that's.
It is. And I think that's what we're debating is whether it's paved or not paved. I would argue that I think paving creates an undue expense that I think would be less desirable. That's my personal opinion and I think that.
But I think the future of landowners would like to contribute to what that would look like for them and we'll have to.
But as you went down to your other side of this little deus, they were thinking that the property owners would maintain that. You were going, the property owners had the property.
What do we call it?
Grass on it or flowers or whatever.
Right. And the thing is, they're not obligated.
I'm still confused about, like, what specifically is in, what's proposed in this project right now? Is it proposed that, because when I'm looking at it, I see that there's a division, there's an extra division between these two for the easement and, you know, maybe the road that would be built eventually. But currently, what is happening with that land? What will it look like? Where will the fence be?
This is an existing easement over there. It exists on paper. There is no road over there currently. If you stood out there, you would never know that it was there.
But I think we're all confused about, like, as this project is proposed and as I'm looking at this map right now, where will the fence be?
The property lines for those four lots in the center go to the center line of the easement. So a portion of the road, the road or future right-of-way would go over their property. This is a common condition in private roads and the rural character. So effectively, although their property line. So effectively, their, although their property line goes to the center line of the French Avenue easement, their effective property line is, you know, half, half the distance back, or, you know, 25 feet back from the center line of that easement. But otherwise, out there in the real world, until such day, if a road is ever built there, you know, one would maybe never know that it's even there.
So there's no open space? There's no space to be either paved or as a community road?
What, what the person would own on title would include that easement, from what I understand? And then the, where they would put the fence is, so there's a little bit, I do, I don't know if to open up the public hearing for-
Yeah, there's, there's still, you know, the property line, you know, the, the fence would need to be outside the easement. The easement exists.
Exactly, the fence would be outside the easement.
Yeah, the easement exists and has existed since the 1915 map.
So, so we do have an alley? Is that what you're saying? You're going to end up with something that looks like an alley?
Well, it's, you know, it's unimproved, and we have open-style fencing on either side.
It, it would look, I mean, there's, there's a, that's what-
Yeah. See, that's the-
An unpaid alley.
That's the dilemma that I think we're all facing here, is we don't understand what we're getting.
In, in reality, it's no, it's no different than what's out there right now. The easement exists currently, and it travels through this area.
Except you're talking about putting fences on both sides.
Well, as it, as it infills, as it infills, you will, you will see fences, I mean, there are lots out there currently that, you know, could be developed, you know, without, you know, subdividing the property, but for the fact that they lack, you know, access. And what this project is largely doing, and why we're not improving French the way the current proposal, prior proposal was for, is more about utilities than about any road. Once we deter, because that, that French Avenue was going to have utilities in it in the previous proposal, public utilities. But once we determined that that, later on, that that was a private right-of-way, we could not, we did not have the rights, nor did the applicant, to put public utilities in that road. So they have found a way to connect all those to Jefferson through the court and essentially loop them back through.
So could the landowner, if they don't like their fence, you know, find a way to remove it and keep it open?
No one's required to have a fence at all.
Okay, so wouldn't, it wouldn't look like an alley if they decided to open it up and, you know, create a larger garden and, and then, you know, it could be taken back, but depending on the contribution of all the neighbors there.
We think it's, you know, highly unlikely you'll ever see a paved road in here at any foreseeable future time. We've worked on many of the projects in this area, and most of the homeowners prefer not to have a paved road that would bring in more traffic and higher speeds. That's always been the, when we've worked on the French Avenue south of this in the past.
Yeah, and some people may prefer a fence just for the sake of privacy. I'm not sure. It's going to be the choice, I guess.
So, can I make a suggestion or actually ask some clarification from council on this? In terms of what our ability is and considering this map today, do we have any jurisdiction over our purview under this, this turnabout, this ham, the hammerhead that's shown up on the map and whether or not we can have that there? Because I would trust that, under the project review, that the city will undertake for this project moving forward, that they can figure out the fencing issue and where it goes and how it looks. But the, the incompleteness of the street is really, I think lends itself more to the larger problem, because if the street looks normal and they figure out the fencing, this is not a problem. But if you have weird fencing on both sides and a turnout there that goes nowhere, then you have a problem in my mind.
Are you referring to the, the center in French Avenue where it looks like there's a little quasi-intersection there?
Yes, that's what everyone's hung up on.
Center, the center of Myers.
Yeah, they primarily have those barricades there, because you do have the ditch on either side of the road. And so what this does is, if anybody were to go up there, it, it stops them from essentially going into the ditch.
I'm actually, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Tilly, I'm talking about halfway down Myers Court, between lots four, five, 12, and 13.
Yeah, pretty much right in the center, right?
Right, yes.
Yeah, so they, they're, you know, since we have the roadside ditch there, in this area, they want to provide some protection, because otherwise, because that's right there in the middle of the road. The rest of the road, you know, fronts on the lots, so presumably people will have driveways. But this is, you know, this is one area sort of in the middle where it does, it, it won't be, it'll be part of the lots, but it, you know, functionally it won't, functionally it won't, because you have to reserve the easement.
Right, but can we either have the paving be straight?
Just straight, no, no pretend intersection.
Or maybe a very nice-looking mini-circle, something that actually makes it look like it's, there's a purpose for it other than for a potential street that will never be built?
Mark.
And is that under our purview?
Sure, we could. I, I mean, it could be straight. We actually required that they put that in from an engineering standpoint because of the potential for it to become an intersection, and the grades and slopes through an intersection are a little different than if you're just carrying a steady slope through there. So it was anticipating the extension in the future. That's not to say that when they came in and built French Road, they couldn't rebuild that section of, so, you know, yeah, it, we could take that out.
And, and yes, that is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission.
I'm so glad.
Wish we could do something.
Do a lot of things.
Okay, so, so I would completely be supportive of, of approving this project, subject to that, that portion of the road being straight and not appearing to look like it's going to turn into a road that will most likely never exist, and trusting the city staff can handle the, the location of the fencing in regards to the easement and the actual properties at a later time when permits are pulled and things like that.
So you moved?
I, I'm throwing, I, I'm happy to move it if there's, if there's comfort from the rest of the commission, but I don't-
I think, I, I think the, the commissioners feel comfortable with it. Yes?
Then yes, I would move approval of the changes to the subdivision map and recertification of the mitigated neg, neg deck, subject to the change in the map where the road is centered there in the middle of Myers. I get that right?
They have it recorded. I'll second Commissioner Sternfall's motion.
Commissioner Sternfall moved. Commissioner Austin second. All in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Okay, this is moved unanimously. After all that, thank you.
Any interested party may appeal the decision, the planning commission this matter, to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Next item on the agenda is continued public hearing regarding modifications to the previously approved Nahal Plaza tentative parcel map number 5085 and hotel conditional use permit at 3425 Reed Avenue, APN 014-680-012-000. Mr. Laffey.
Yes. Mr. Laffey is on, is out of the country at the moment, so I'm going to handle this one on his behalf.
Thank you.
We are back before you on this particular project, which has been before you on a couple of other occasions, and most recently was late last year. As the applicant continues to refine the project and move toward implementation, we are seeking some modifications to the previous approvals. Even though each of the modifications on their own are relatively minor, cumulatively we felt that it warranted commission consideration one last time. The other, the other, the applicant will go into greater detail, but we also did want to report that we have received their building permit application for the first hotel, which is a big milestone for the project. There are a few changes to the project, and I'll sort of summarize those tonight. We are, previously, we had not had a new driveway to connection to Stillwater Road, and it will be on the east side of the project, so we are recommending that that now be included into the project. And then the hotel project, hotel buildings themselves changed their configuration somewhat. I think as noted as the, in the project description, which is on page two of your staff report, the first hotel, which is the, the Spring Hill, will provide the new driveway from Stillwater. And then for the second hotel, which is still pending, we're still calling that, we're sort of referring to that as the future hotel, we seek to really rotate its orientation from what was previously approved, and then also then allow the Spring Hill to, on the first floor, would include some additional meeting space and rather than, rather than rooms as was previously included. So we are bringing this part, project back for you tonight and recommending approval. The applicant is here tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions among the commissioners to my right? Any to my left? No? Okay, I'll put it up for a public hearing, public comments section from the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us today. We've had-
Could you please provide your name, sorry?
Oh, excuse me, my name is Gerald Jenkins. We originally started off with a prototype for Spring Hill Suites from Marriott International. When we designed per that prototype, Marriott International did not like the design because the prototype was actually designed for Virginia in that region of the country, so we started off with indoor-outdoor swimming pool. With it being in California and the heat we have in the summer, they made the decision that they wanted the pool outside. So with the footprint of the building, everything had to change. You know, we had to reconfigure the parking lot, relocate the building on the lot, and also, we found that there was a demand for entertainment space, for 4,000 square foot in that area, meeting halls and stuff. So, we changed that design. The future hotel changed configurations when the parking lot changed for the other hotel. Marriott also asked us to seek access from Stillwater. So their signage would be on Stillwater and on Reed. So, we complied with the submission of the 30% to Marriott, did those things. We now have 100% approval from them with the design that we have, and we'll be going back to Bethesda, Maryland Monday for our final orientation. So the project is moving ahead. As David had mentioned, the plans have been submitted, not only for the architectural design, but also for the civils, the lot improvements. And so we seek your approval of our modification to the original approval.
Okay, thank you for that background. It's very helpful. Are there any questions among the commissioners? Commissioner Moore?
Very quick question. This is only going to be on lot number two?
Yes.
And we're going to bring the access down between lots four and five and then?
Yes, to one and two. Well, to two and three, I'll be on your map.
Yeah, and then up two and three?
Yes.
Are we going down to Reed Avenue also?
We are. That, access to Reed Avenue was directly in line with the exiting, ingress and egress for the Highway Patrol station there.
Just as a quick comment, this is my thought. I, I haven't figured out exactly where you're going to replace all these trees at. Is it just going to be on lot two?
No, no. We hired a landscape architect, and he's been working very closely with Deena Curtley. And so the mitigation of the trees that were taken out, our planning plan incorporates those trees being replaced on all four lots. And those are in addition to the trees that are required by the planning department. There will be a cash mitigation that we will have to pay just south of $70,000, and that will be paid prior to the issuance of the grading permit.
Okay, my question again goes, what are we going to plant? When, if we approve lot two, what are we going to plant? Just on lot two, or are we going to go down both driveways?
We're going to, yes, yes.
What about on lot four on the, I, I guess my comment is, I think we should plant some trees on the outer boundaries of lots three and four, and just put some trees in. Even if you don't develop those properties today, they'll grow bigger and you'll have less of a mitigation going on with the, the city.
That's great, except for the real estate market.
Yeah, but trees are cheaper too now then. Never thought of it like that. It was just, you, you're asking to do something different to the project. All I'm saying is, you know, we need to get this tree issue behind us, and one of the ways to do it is to plant a few extra trees on a couple of the lots that don't mean anything because they're just boundary lots anyway, like-
Yes, we will be planting on the boundaries. When the roads go in-
And if we plant it on the boundary and the roadways, and those things grow, you're going to have to pay less, because every year they're in there until you develop the other three lots, they're going to get bigger and you'll have less of an expense. That's my comment.
Thank you. Can you, yeah, Commissioner Austin?
Yeah, so I can appreciate, first of all, thank you for coming back and thank you for, for building in our, in our city. I don't have too much of a comment on, on the hotels. One of my, my bigger concerns is on the commercial portions reflected in parcels three and four. I am concerned that, I'm, I'm not sure how well those are going to market, and I, I suspect that you will be back here for another modification for the commercial area. Do you, are you in discussions with potential commercial tenants, like restaurants, et cetera, for those spaces?
We are, we are. We are in discussion with Landry and Darden. We're represented by CBRE Real Estate. Rick Martinez is our agent who's handling that. And I think the last I heard, he had sent out 900 emails, inquiries and stuff to the other CBRE brokers, and other brokers in Northern California, and particularly restaurants. We're still trying to get a restaurant on parcel number four.
Okay. I, I will, I will say too that with a hotel, parking and hotel relationships are a little bit different. I'm, I'm sure that my colleague, Commissioner Sternfall, can talk about that if need be. But along Reed Avenue, I would personally prefer to see a little more frontage of the restaurant on Reed, which is a major thoroughfare, and less than a, less a sea of parking. I just think that's slightly better development. So, I'm not asking for a redesign. That wouldn't preclude me from approving staff recommendation this evening, but I would like you to, to give some thought to that as you negotiate with potential commercial tenants. Whether that type of setup where it's more, you've got your restaurant on the street rather than after a sea of parking would my, be my personal preference, not just from an aesthetic perspective, but also from a, a good land use planning perspective.
Okay.
So that's, that's my feedback.
Very good feedback. Any other comments from the commissioners or questions?
I'll wait till after we close the hearing.
Okay. All right. And I, this time, I have no questions as well, and, and I don't have any request to speak on this particular item. So I will close the public hearing, take it back to the commissioners for any, for continued discussion. Commissioner Leibig?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, staff, for the presentation and the applicant for coming back. Minor just comments, so. I would echo Ms. Austin's comments. My only comment has to do with on parcel four. The restaurants, there's a drive-through restaurant indicated on this version, and again, it's, well, you probably haven't sat through our other drive-through meetings before, but we, we tend to get hung up on those just a little bit. You have a restaurant that's surrounded by parking and that includes a drive aisle, and essentially you have, you have a building now surrounded by cars and, and cars moving around. I would just request that you be very thoughtful in the placement of the drive-through and the placement of the restaurant. So it doesn't, you, you're not walking across a drive aisle or several parking lots just to hear-
And if there is ever a drive-through here, that will come back to the planning commission for a use permit. I would, I would suggest to the commission that the, consider the building footprints on lots four and five to be fairly conceptual. You know, we, we don't have-
Three and four?
Well, three, we have fairly much more detail about, you know, the size of the building and how many rooms for the hotel and sort of its envelope. Four and five, you know, we'll still work on, we don't have design review.
Can you tell me, is it, is it three and four, or am I missing? I don't see a five.
I think the numbers are different on two maps.
Yeah, well, yeah, I apologize. Lot one was, is the existing Hampton.
Yes.
My apologies. So, the, I'm looking at the, the tree, the tree plan. But I, I know we, Commissioner Leibig had brought up the potential drive-through on what's shown, it was labeled as lot five here. Any use, that will come back to planning commission if, if there is a drive-through there, but we'll continue to work with them on the other retail uses that will be allowed in the C2 zone here.
So the comment really, I, thank you, is, is when, when you are considering a drive-through, please consider the placement of it carefully. We, I, I know that this commission heavily scrutinizes that, and they can give you ideas of what they like and what they don't. I won't go into that detail right now. On Mr. Moore's comment, if you're putting in the streets, I think it's great, you know, to put, put the trees along them. I'm a little concerned about planting on lots that aren't constructed yet, because then you'll probably be ripping out those trees, and that's just a cost that I, I don't think we want to bear, plus then we're pulling out more trees, and heaven forbid we should make them mitigate that.
I would totally agree with that. I was just making the comment that if you're going to plant trees, you might want to go on the exterior boundaries of a couple extra lots, only in hopes that you didn't have to pay $70,000. If they grow big, you can cut it down.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I do like Chick-fil-A's, Chick-fil-A.
Panera.
There you go.
There we go. All right, no other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Sternfall?
I just wanted to thank both the applicant and staff for all the work on this one. I have to say that I don't leave planning commission meetings very often apprehensive about the decision we made, but after we made this first decision on this map and the discussion around the trees and all the challenges that that would create for this project, I was honestly very concerned with this project moving forward. And so I'm really glad to see you back tonight and congratulate you on the progress that you've made. I don't think I can overemphasize the importance of both this project in bringing a nationally-recognized, very respectable brand of hotel to our city and the need for that, and what that will do, not just from providing additional great places to stay in our community, but also from an occupancy tax perspective from the fiscal side. So I just want to encourage both, both staff and the applicant to continue the hard work together in figuring these, these issues out as they come forward. And I'm very appreciative of all the hard work and look forward to seeing these, both of these project, hotel projects, be built here in our community.
Thank you.
And I echo the comments of my fellow commissioners as well. There are no other comments or questions? I'll accept a motion to approve the recommended action.
I'll move the recommended action.
Commissioner Leibig moved?
Second.
Okay, we, Commissioner Timber, second, first. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
No, any noes? Any abstentions? All right, this is moved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any interested party may appeal the decision, the planning commission this matter to the city council by filing our written appeal with the city clerk within 14 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Okay. Next, we move on to our informal discussion, and Mr. Tilly, you had some thoughts that you wanted to.
Yes, our next regularly scheduled meeting would be July 7th, I believe it is, that regular Thursday night. As we discussed previously, we are recommending that you cancel that meeting in light of the Fourth of July holiday and the fact that we have been quite a bit busy this year with meeting twice a month, almost every month this year, and then if, and then our next regularly scheduled meeting would then be July 21st, which we would indeed have.
Okay, so that meeting, July 7th, is canceled?
That would be our, that would be our recommendation.
Emotion, are you, are you just? No, he just let it.
We don't, we don't need a motion, but I want to, I assume that would be okay with the commission.
What will I do without them?
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Timber, you have a question?
I have a question. I had in my calendar that tomorrow's the Village Parkway opening at 7:00 PM. Is that right?
It is at 10:00 AM.
Oh, 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
That's a rumor. Okay.
And then it's bike parade.
Is it, is it paved? Okay. It was paved this morning.
No, not that part.
Okay, I was like, it's not paved.
Any other questions in this informal discussion?
Do you, do you have any comments on the situation with revision brewery, or should we just handle that offline?
We, of course, are disappointed that it is not going to be here after all.
Oh.
But hopefully, when, if he does have one of those satellite facilities that was mentioned in the article, hopefully that could be here.
Okay, all right.
Well, thank you for, very much for your hard work on projects like that.
Yes.
We tried.
All right, Don.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Sure, we will adjourn.